Metropolitan District Board Meeting of February 13th, 2023. Please come to order. Clerk, please read the roll.
Tabella.
Here.
Addle.
Here.
Anderson. Avedision.
Here.
Bazano.
Here.
Buell.
Here.
Bush.
Here.
DeCai.
Here.
Gail.
Here.
Cardo.
Here.
Gentile. Healy. Hoffman.
Here.
Hoeb.
Here.
Holloway.
Here.
LaChance.
Here.
Lester.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Magnin. Mandike.
Here.
Maniscalco. Payne.
Here.
Patel.
I see Commissioner Patel on the WebEx.
Okay.
Potowski. Salemi.
Here.
Stuber. Taylor. Torres.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Carrier. We have a quorum.
Okay. Pledge of Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I like United States of America.
It's America and.
Don't think we're going to have a swearing in. Swearing in of new commissioners. Again, this is a formality. It's not a requirement. When the letter comes in, John calls the person and they're automatically at the point of the letter, a member of the Metropolitan District Commission. We traditionally have sworn people in at board meetings, so apparently they won't be here. Five, approval of minutes of the January 4th, 2023, and 2000, January 23, 23. Is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
Are there any additions or deletions? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public comment relative to agenda items. Okay. Report from the District Chairman. Eight, report from the Chief Executive Officer.
I just wanted to thank the commissioners and staff for, as part of the strategic planning, Chairman Avedision, we have gone through and on the management study of 2003, we have presented, as you know, I presented my brief summary of 86 pages in December. We did have operations on January 24th, utility services in the Command Center on February 8th, and we are next up is February 21st, which will be our engineering and construction in the H&amp;S group, which Susan Nigrelli and her staff will present. So, thank you very much for bearing with us and listening to those long, I think the last meeting was two and a half hours, but I think it's pretty interesting, and we've tried to bring in actual staff to talk about what they do and how they do it, and we brought in a lot of different equipment and props to show the commission on what we're trying to explain on a technical basis, so thank you for that.
Can I just add one thing? I really think that the technology we're using in the field, and we can see where this technology is now crossing with the economics of what we're doing in terms of staffing and on the other issues. It was very interesting. I think anybody who sat through two and a half hours, it went by pretty fast, and a lot of questions too.
Yeah, no, thank you, and to the chairman's point, you start to see the benefit of the multitasking job description when you start to see the equipment that, or the technology that staff is using to do, quote, "more with less." So, it really starts to put a picture together to understand, how do you actually do all this additional work with less people? And it's really through, you know, improvements in our processes and it's improvements in our technology, so that's great. I have reported on our meetings regarding our claim with our contractor for the tunnel project. I'm not going to get into too much details because Chris is going to talk about that, but I did, we were having two pass. We were trying to have a technical meeting at a technical geotech level with the contractor and our staff, and we started this process in September. We agreed to have a technical meeting. That technical meeting never happened. They kept canceling it for lots of reasons. We finally had a technical meeting to present our, both of our sides regarding their claim on January 25th, and I, we had this down at 231 Brandon Road, MDC's property. I was there with my technical staff, the technical, I'm sorry, the project managers, executives of the joint venture showed up, but they didn't bring in the technical staff. So, it was really a one-way conversation, which wasn't really productive. I'll let Chris get into the legal side of that, so we're still hoping for some resolution on a technical side. I just want to mention the February 6th meeting in the North End. We did have Commissioner Anderson, Commissioner Lewis, Bill, myself, Commissioner Holloway, and Janice Fleming, lobbyists, go to that meeting. We were requested to go, and we listened. It was a meeting that was held for EPA and for deep staff. Commissioner was there, the EPA Administrator was there, and really.
State Senator, is it?
Yep, state senators.
United States.
United States Senators, thank you.
Bloomingdale.
And so, it was an important meeting for the community to talk to EPA and to deep. There was a lot of listening. We, MDC did not speak, we were just there to listen and to provide some support if we're asked, but we were not asked, so. And then, in terms of really important, I'm going to have a chance to talk to Commissioner Taylor about this, but we did get finally contracts signed. As you know, we signed a contract with our Supervisors Union, so we just signed that, and it was approved by the Board and PPI. We just had a tentative agreement signed by the other two, so we'll be bringing that to PPI in March, Commissioner, and get that resolved, so that's a very good thing for the MDC. And with that, I'm going to leave the rest of my discussions around item, which is number 12.
Any questions for the Chief Executive Officer? No, thank you. I think some of the things that are going to come in item 12 are really, we had this, we went through this the other night with you, the pictures and the drawings of what exists in the water, you know, the whole issue within the house is very interesting, and it's very, done very well, and so that's going to be talked about later on.
If we have time after Chris's presentation.
Right. Chris will bring us up to it. Okay. Report from District Council.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chris Stone, District Council. You have on your agenda laid out items nine A through nine F. Some of them, those will be very, very brief, and the two last ones will be, I'll request the, an executive session on those. The first one has to do with the deep landfill, and that's merely an update from your January meeting. We have, as you know, on the oldest claim, which dates back to the pre-tiered rate for the unacceptable groundwater that's coming out of the Hartford landfill, that claim is in suit. The state had until mid-last week, and they did file a recognition of receiving that suit, being served, properly served that suit, and so that's in litigation. The second, and that's, that is a change from the January presentation. The other, the second matter relating to the Hartford landfill is the post-tiered rate case that is pending with the state's Claims Commissioner. The old Claims Commissioner has left that position, and they're waiting to appoint a new Claims Commissioner, but in the meantime, they still have the Deputy Claims Commissioners that were appointed by Legislative Fiat about two years ago. We have made application to have this second case handled the same way as the first to that Deputy Claims Commissioner, so we'll get hopefully a.
Mr. Chairman, did you start the meeting?
Yes, we have, Commissioner Patel. We've got you down on the screen. Thank you.
So, that second claim, we've again asked for consideration by those special state's attorneys, special claims commissioners.
John, did we start the meeting yet?
Yes, we have. Is he here? Can you?
It's heard when we call the roll.
Yeah.
I think they can hear.
Okay, well, sometimes we have a problem with it coming in. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Chris.
That's okay, that's right. So, we have yet to hear back on whether that's acceptable. They have a certain period of time from our notice to the Judiciary Committee of our intent to, or request to.
John?
Yes, Commissioner Patel, can you hear me?
Thanks, son, who's in?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Chris.
Thanks, and if anyone on the phone cannot hear me, please let me know, or if anyone here needs me to speak up, please let me know. But that second case, honor before May of this year, will determine whether it will go before that Special Claims Commissioner, hopefully it will, and hopefully the same result will come from it. It's a similar, almost identical claim, but for the rate that we're charging, and I see no reason why it shouldn't be released for suit. The third case is the Buckingham Garage case, that's the newest, the youngest, they'll call it, of the three claims. That is not ripe for going to the Special Claims Commissioners, but as soon as it does, I think it's a year and a half, it has to be 18 months to give the Claims Commissioner an opportunity to hear the case. Who knows whether that's going to be done within that period of time, but certainly if it's not, we'll seek the same redress that we sought with the other two. I would venture to guess that if the second claim is, gets the same treatment as the first, that in all likelihood, those two cases would be combined. They'd deal with the same defendant, they'd deal with the same property, they'd deal with the same type of discharge, and they deal with, the only difference is the rate, and clearly you can figure out what rate applies to what time and figure out the damages for each. So, that's the status on those two. If there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. If we get into strategies, et cetera, then I would ask that you, we go into executive session, but for informational purposes, that's a matter of public knowledge, we don't need to go into executive session.
Commissioner Salemi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris, during the course of the last week, Governor Mont proposed a bill to create the Connecticut Waste Authority, which is going to be, if the bill passes, you know, is going to be a successor to MIRA, and he got very specific in the proposed bill.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's a House bill, I'm not sure, but.
A House bill.
Is it? Is it a House bill?
It's a House bill.
So, but it got very specific about the reserve funds of the, of MIRA, which is significant, 55 million, I think, or something like that. It says that they can't be used to reduce tipping fees, you know, you can't go backwards with it, and that it supposes that about 2 million of it is going to be set aside for the operation of the new authority, but the rest is going to be available for environmental cleanup. I just wondered if, and it doesn't say specifically at the trash plant itself, I think it's any issue that MIRA and its predecessor, CRA, might have had with the environmental, environment, you know, it could be spent on. I mean, is there, is that, do you think that that's possible, that some of that money is going to wind up in, you know, going towards doing something with the landfill, or is that totally out of the question? I just, you know.
Yep, that's a great question, Commissioner. Chris Stone, District Council, if I may, Mr. Chairman, respond to that?
Sure.
The, the monies identified, I won't say allocated, because they're just identified now within that bill, are, relate solely to MIRA's activities. MIRA is the successor to CRA. Back, I want to, in the Malloy administration, so that goes back six, seven years now, the legislature passed a bill where, wherein the state took over the landfill obligations from CRA, so that got it out of, took it away from not only CRA, but eventually also took it away from MIRA. And the state took over the landfill and allocated a certain amount of money, I believe it was $35 million, to deep, to manage and provide for ongoing operation of the landfill until it was closed, and then to manage the closure thereafter. In their infinite wisdom, and that's not a political statement, but in their infinite wisdom, they then, during a certain budget difficulty in the state, they swept certain accounts, and one of the accounts they swept and used for the general fund, balancing the general fund, was that $35 million account. So, there's no monies left in that old account. The monies that are identified in the MIRA, or it's not MIRA now, but it's whatever they're calling it these days, is identified for MIRA-type activities, which does not include the landfill, because they were taken out of it, so.
Technology, technology.
We're really starting from scratch. We'll certainly monitor, and I did get your email, and I was looked into this, but we'll continue to monitor that bill to see if there's an opportunity there, but we continue to have some discussions with legislative leaders about revisiting the initiative last session for some assistance on that. It's going to have to come from legislature, legislature is part of a budget proposal, but we're not, you know, relying solely on, and rightfully so, solely on the whim of the legislature, so that's why we're continuing with the litigation that we're engaged in. But hopefully, you know, the state will see to it to at least make a, an offer to resolve those cases that go beyond where we are thus far, and where we are thus far is basically paying the rate that they feel is an appropriate rate, which is well below what our rates call for everyone else, so.
Yeah, and I really add to what Senator, in a reading, a close reading of the proposed bill, and specifically says that this authority that's going to be created is not a state agency, and it kind of spells it out, says not an agency of the state of Connecticut and so forth, so it's an authority the way that MIRA and CRA were, and it basically says, well, any place where it says MIRA, you're going to say, okay, it's a new authority, so.
Right, right, right.
But they're going to wind up with 55 million or more, you know, in reserve funds to spend, and if they can't spend it at the landfill or the other locations that MIRA managed, then I guess it'll all be spent, you know, at the, at the plant, and, you know, and right off of Reserve Road or wherever it is, it'll all be spent there for, to demolish the building and clean up the site or something. That's what it sounds like, but.
Well, through you, Mr. Chairman, the clean, I'm sorry, but the cleanup that's contemplated in that bill is the cleanup of the trash plant.
Yeah, yeah.
And all that may come with that cleanup of the trash plant, you know, who knows the extent of the environmental contamination on the site, and what might be necessary to clean that site to make it available for some other use, but it's identified for that site.
If you, obviously, there's a competing, not bill, I don't want to say that, a thought up there. That's the last session of legislature, they passed a bill which went through the legislature unanimously to establish a task force to look at the whole issue of solid waste on a statewide basis, but primarily South Meadows was most their focus, and that was supposed to report to the General Assembly on January 1st, 2023. They've postponed that, I think, for two months, they're still having hearings on that, and they will deal with it. If you read that bill, not even closely, it's basically a state, a state authority that is going to, the chairman of which is the chair, chairman of DEEP. So, it's an acknowledgement that it's their property, as it has been for quite a while, even though it was in a quasi-public, the quasi-public was formed by the state legislature, and it's still within their control. But, what they're doing now, if you look at it, they're saying to report no later than January 1st, 2024. So, there's going to be a lot of push and shove on this, I'm sure, because you've got interest from both the legislature, this is a governor, it's a House bill number, but it's, it's the governor's bill that he submits to the General Assembly through his prerogative, the rules of the legislature. So, it should be interesting to see where they go on this, there's, there's a lot of, but they do address, as you point out, Commissioner, they do address the fact that there is $55 million, and it was, I think it was more than six years ago, it was 12 years ago, because the last time the governor was, four years ago, was Malloy, and there was four years and eight years in his administration, so it's back.
Sometime within.
In that period of time, where they went through that whole exercise in the South Meadows, which was under the Malloy administration, it wasn't under the other neds. Any further questions?
Wow, okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Chris.
Next is just an update on the 2022 year-end closeout of the collections account. Your collection attorneys, of which there are five, spread out among several member towns, were assigned $3.2 million worth of accounts receivable. They collected 2.7. Of that amount, leaving a balance of about $500,000, which continues to be litigated or attempted to collect. Of that, 2.6, there was, they also collected $440,000 worth of attorney's fees, so they collected money from the debtor, water customer, delinquent water customer, and basically paid for themselves. So, there was no money out of our pocket or out of my budget to pay that. We have beefed up significantly our attempts to, whether it be by negotiation or some agreed upon compromise, to get our ratepayers to understand that failure to pay not only will cause for action to collect the underlying debt, the water, unpaid water bill, but also could lead to this additional percentage for attorney's fees, and it ranges anywhere from, depending upon the volume of a particular law firm, from 11% to 20% of the outstanding amount collected. So, it's not insignificant in some cases, as you can well imagine, and they don't go out to outside counsel unless they get to a certain point, I think $2,500 is the threshold. So, we try to encourage people to contact us directly, we not only send out letters through Kelly's, Kelly's people in accounts receivable, encouraging them to speak with us, we then send a letter out from the Office of District Council on legal stationery, advising them of the ramifications of going to that next step, which is going outside. We don't charge the 20% inside, but going outside, there's going to be an additional fee associated with coming current, so. And we've gotten a pretty good response so far, as you can see, these are just the numbers from the collection attorneys, but of a good percentage, about a third, after we contact them directly, and most of those, quite frankly, are from LLCs out of New York for some reason that we contact, but, and they don't even know they have an outstanding water bill, so. But a good percentage were able to collect in-house, which is also saves, gets money here without having the water customer pay outside counsel. So, it was a good year for our collections, and most importantly, the paying customers didn't pay to collect the non-paying customers' bill.
Questions?
Commissioner Addle?
Commissioner Addle. Chris, the 3.2 million, was that just after staff had collected internally?
Yes.
Okay. Thought so, thank you.
Further questions? Okay.
And then there's two claims that we were able to resolve, and one of them's not a significant number, it was a $25,000 settlement, that's number C, Norwood Williams, but it's one I wanted to bring to your attention because it shows a, what your inside staff is able to accomplish working together to, for a resolution. So, we had a boiler cleaning company doing work out at the Hartford Water Pollution Control Facility, and prior to them doing any work, and that was Allstate, it's in the claim itself, Allstate Cleaners, prior to them doing any work, Tom Tyler and his people, and Health and Safety, and Craig Scott and his people developed a work plan that detailed the safety aspects, what had to be done, what the process was to follow, when to do it, what to do, and how to make sure that no one was injured, because this dealing with these boilers can be a somewhat hazardous situation. Well, lo and behold, the subcontractor to our contractor decided to do it differently, and by deciding to do it differently, someone, one of their employees was injured, had the tip of his finger cut off, he's fine, he's working and all that, but there was a claim for that injury, and the claim was made against the MDC and against our contractor, Allstate. Well, thankfully, we had that work plan, that pre-work plan that was developed and signed off by everybody, and so we were able to get through John's work, able to get the insurance company for, who we consider the responsible party, the subcontractor to the contractor, get their insurance company to step in and indemnify us from any claim. It turned out to settle for $25,000. $15,000 was assigned to the MDC, $10,000 to Allstate, but our potential liability was indemnified by that other insurance company, so we didn't pay a dime. The allocation was just to see which insurance company paid, but in effect, by the good work that was done upfront, led to a positive result on the legal end at the end of the day, so, and that's more the work of Tom and his people, and Craig and his people than certainly our work, but we did have some part to play in that. The second is a claim.
Is there any questions on that claim?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Questions? Go ahead, Chris.
Thanks, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The second, under 9D, is a, we had a, if you call, we had a contractor out at, in West Hartford, at one of the roads out there, and there was a 54-inch transmission main that, in the course of their work, they, arguably unintentionally, but they did, even though it was marked out, hit a 54-inch transmission main, caused a lot of water to spill onto the streets, caused a lot of man and women power from the MDC to fix that, had equipment come out, materials come out, our claim was approximately $225,000. The, the good news is, the break was resolved by Chris Leveque and his people almost immediately. They kept track of all the invoices, all the costs, knowing that there would be a claim down the road, we made the claim and settled the claim for 100%, 100 cents on the dollar, so. And again, the work upfront with keeping the records to verify the claim, and then us being able to, to provide that verification to who we consider to be, and ultimately was, the responsible party, and we were paid in full on that. And if there's any questions on that, I'd be more than happy to.
Questions? Go, 100% Chris, keep going.
And finally, and if you don't, if it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, items, I would ask that you go into executive session, item E and F, there will be a request for a resolution on item E, an update on item F, and we can handle those together in executive session.
Is there a motion for executive session? It's been moved and seconded, before we get into the vote, who would be retained in the roll?
Attorney Myrtle, Mr. Jellison, Sue Nigrelli, Chief of Engineering, Kelly Shane, and Tom Tyler.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion to go into executive session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
This is John Myrtle, we're about to return to regular session. Anyone on the session, can you, can you hear me? Commissioner Curry.
Yes, I got you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Patel?
So it's an acknowledgement that it's their property as it has been for quite a while, even though it was in a quasi-public, the quasi-public was formed by the state legislature and it's still within their control. But what they're doing now, if you look at it, they're saying to report no later than January 1st, 2024. So there's going to be a lot of push and shove on this, I'm sure, because you've got interest from both the legislature. This is a governor, it's a House bill number, but it's the governor's bill that he submits to the General Assembly through his prerogative, the rules of the legislature. So it should be interesting to see where they go on this. There's a lot of, but they do address, as you point out, Commissioner, they do address the fact that there is $55 million. And it was, I think it was more than six years ago, it was 12 years ago, because the last time the governor was, four years ago, was Malloy, and there was four years and eight years in his administration, so it's back.
Sometime within.
In that period of time, where they went through that whole exercise in the South Meadows, which was under the Malloy administration. It wasn't under the other Neds. Any further questions?
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, next is just an update on the 2022 year-end closeout of the collections account. Your collection attorneys, of which there are five, spread out amongst several member towns, were assigned $3.2 million worth of accounts receivable. They collected 2.7. Of that amount, leaving a balance of about $500,000, which continues to be litigated or attempted to collect. Of that 2.6, there was, they also collected $440,000 worth of attorney's fees, so they collected money from the debtor, water customer, delinquent water customer, and basically paid for themselves. So it was no money out of our pocket or out of my budget to pay that. We have beefed up significantly our attempts to, whether it be by negotiation or some agreed upon compromise, to get our ratepayers to understand that failure to pay not only will cause for action to collect the underlying debt, the unpaid water bill, but also could lead to this additional percentage for attorney's fees. And it ranges anywhere from, depending upon the volume of a particular law firm, from 11% to 20% of the outstanding amount collected. So it's not insignificant in some cases, as you can well imagine. And they don't go out to outside counsel unless they get to a certain point. I think $2,500 is the threshold. So we try to encourage people to contact us directly. We not only send out letters through Kelly's people in accounts receivable, encouraging them to speak with us, we then send a letter out from the Office of District Counsel on legal stationery, advising them of the ramifications of going to that next step, which is going outside. We don't charge the 20% inside, but going outside, there's going to be an additional fee associated with coming current. So, and we've gotten a pretty good response so far, as you can see. These are just the numbers from the collection attorneys, but of a good percentage, about a third, after we contact them directly, and most of those, quite frankly, are from LLCs out of New York for some reason that we contact, but then they don't even know they have an outstanding water bill. But a good percentage were able to collect in-house, which is also saves, gets money here without having the water customer pay outside counsel. So it was a good year for our collections, and most importantly, the paying customers didn't pay to collect the non-paying customers' bill.
Questions?
Commissioner Adel?
Commissioner Adel?
Chris, the $3.2 million, was that just after staff had collected internally?
Yes.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Further questions? Okay.
And then there's two claims that we were able to resolve, and one of them's not a significant number. It was a $25,000 settlement. That's number C, Norwood Williams, but it's one I wanted to bring to your attention because it shows a, what your inside staff is able to accomplish working together for resolution. So we had a boiler cleaning company doing work out at the Hartford Water Pollution Control Facility, and prior to them doing any work, and that was Allstate, it's in the claim itself, Allstate Cleaners, prior to them doing any work, Tom Tyler and his people and Health and Safety and Craig Scott and his people developed a work plan that detailed the safety aspects, what had to be done, what the process was to follow, when to do it, what to do, and how to make sure that no one was injured, because this, dealing with these boilers can be a somewhat hazardous situation. Well, lo and behold, the subcontractor to our contractor decided to do it differently. And by deciding to do it differently, someone, one of their employees was injured, had the tip of his finger cut off. He's fine, he's working and all that, but there was a claim for that injury, and the claim was made against the MDC and against our contractor, Allstate. Well, thankfully, we had that work plan, that pre-work plan that was developed and signed off by everybody, and so we were able to get through John's work, able to get the insurance company for, who we consider the responsible party, the subcontractor to the contractor, get their insurance company to step in and indemnify us from any claim. It turned out to settle for $25,000. $15,000 was assigned to the MDC, $10,000 to Allstate, but our potential liability was indemnified by that other insurance company. So we didn't pay a dime. The allocation was just to see which insurance company paid, but in effect, by the good work that was done upfront, led to a positive result on the legal end at the end of the day. So, and that's more the work of Tom and his people and Craig and his people than certainly our work, but we did have some part to play in that. The second is a claim.
Is there any questions on that claim? Questions? Go ahead, Chris.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The second, under 9D, is a, we had a, if you recall, we had a contractor out at, in West Hartford at one of the roads out there, and there was a 54-inch transmission main that, in the course of their work, they, arguably unintentionally, but they did, even though it was marked out, hit a 54-inch transmission main, caused a lot of water to spill onto the streets, caused a lot of man and women power from the MDC to fix that, had equipment come out, materials come out. Our claim was approximately $225,000. The good news is the break was resolved by Chris Leveque and his people almost immediately. They kept track of all the invoices, all the costs, knowing that there would be a claim down the road. We made the claim and settled the claim for 100%, 100 cents on the dollar. And again, the work upfront with keeping the records to verify the claim, and then us being able to provide that verification to who we considered to be and ultimately was the responsible party, and we were paid in full on that. And if there's any questions on that, I'd be more than happy to answer those.
Questions? 100% Chris, keep going.
And finally, and if you don't, if it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, items, I would ask that you go into executive session, item E and F. There will be a request for a resolution on item E, an update on item F, and we can handle those together in executive session.
Is there a motion for executive session? It's been moved and seconded. Before we get into the vote, who would be retained in the room?
Attorney Myrtle, Mr. Jellison, Sue Negreli, Chief of Engineering, Kelly Shane, and Tom Tyler.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion to go into executive session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
This is John Myrtle. We're about to return to regular session. Anyone on the session, can you hear me? Commissioner Curry?
Yes, I got you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Patel? Is he still on?
Not yet. But we're okay. Are we recording Julie?
Is there the appropriate, a motion to come out of executive session?
Motion to move out of executive session?
Second.
I'm sorry, it isn't that. Is there a second? There's a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We stand out of session. We are back into general session. Item number 10. Board of Finance, consideration of potential action regarding state of Connecticut financing DWSRF.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, we got to go back to E. I'm sorry, yeah. Item number 9E. Consideration of potential action regarding resolution of Connecticut Department of Health declaratory ruling proceedings. Is there a motion to withdraw without prejudice? Apply to withdraw without prejudice. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, should we include in that motion the fact that we are going to make application to DPH?
It's, yeah, it can be.
Abandon without prejudice.
Is it abandoned without?
That application.
Articulate to the body what it should be.
A motion to withdraw without prejudice, the declaratory ruling proceeding before the Connecticut Department of Public Health on Colbrook Reservoir, and apply for an abandonment permit for Colbrook Reservoir without prejudice.
That's the motion before the body. It has been moved. Let's, is there a motion to move adoption?
So moved.
So moved. Second?
Second.
Discussion. I think we had enough discussion on it. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Resolve that issue. Item 10, Board of Finance, consideration of potential action regarding state of Connecticut financing DWSRF 2003-7110. Is there a motion to adopt? So moved. Okay.
Do we need a second?
Is there a second?
A second.
I assume there was a second, so it's a prerogative of the chair. Any, Commissioner Salimi?
Yeah, I'm sorry, which, I just, I.
This is the Board of Finance.
Problem with my phone, I couldn't hear what yours said, I just.
Consideration and potential action regarding state of Connecticut financing, the DWSRF 2003-7110.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Yes, this, I believe this was passed unanimously at a February 1st meeting of the Board of Finance.
Okay. Is there a discussion? John?
I just had a sort of a question.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Gale. I keep forgetting.
So in looking, this, this is authorizing slightly over $2 million. And I'm assuming that this is part of our capital improvements budget, but it's not a capital improvements budget for 2023. It apparently was in the capital improvements budget for 2022. So when I saw this, I went to look at the capital improvements budget and say, okay, well, where is this in our budget?
Isn't that adopted in 22 for 23?
And I don't see it in the 2023 budget somewhere, and it's probably my not understanding how to read these budget documents, so I guess I'm just raised the question. If I wanted to try to figure out, when I see something like this, where it is that we authorize it, how would I go about finding that?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Kelly Shane is here, our chief administrative officer, right behind you. So Kelly, you want to just give us a little update on this?
Sure, sure. So what is before you is a resolution to approve and execute the IFO PLO. The actual project obligation or appropriation was done by this board. I don't know what year. It's the Boulevard and Garfield project. Might have been 21, 22. I'm not sure off the top of my head. You have the 22, so if it's not in there, then it was prior.
It is in there.
Oh, it is in there. Okay. So that was the authorization to move forward with the project. This is actually the resolution to execute.
Spend the money.
The interim funding obligation and the project loan obligation with the state of Connecticut, DPH, through the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, where we get 1.9 million of that with a 2% loan, and the balance, about $150,000, was grant money. So 1.7 million of the projects has actually been spent. We just have some restoration work on the back end, but what this does is you're authorizing us, with the assistance of bond counsel who created the resolution, to execute that loan agreement so that we can then get reimbursed the money we've already spent, as well as the additional funds on the project.
So.
So Commissioner, if I may, just to add to that, so as a budgetary process, this board approves CIP projects, both water and sewer, and we submit forms, B11 forms, right, B11 forms, and the board approves that on an annual basis. Now, on the clean water project, you're also going to see those projects, that's a new process for this new consent order, so you'll approve those authorizations to allow us to spend. This is just the loan component with the state of Connecticut to actually fund the allocation.
So here's my question. I get that, and I see it every year where we appropriate, you know, $40 million for CIP, but we apparently did $40 million last year, and $40 million the year before, and some number the year before that, and many of these projects carry forward. So is there someplace where all of our capital improvement projects are listed so that you know what we're working on in 2023? Right now, I can't tell what we're working on in 2023.
Well, we have two, we have.
Going back every single year.
Yeah, you have two capital improvement budgets.
Yeah, so I really encourage you to come and listen to Susan, because when she does her strategic planning for engineering, so the way that we do this is, I don't think we have a actual document that the board sees in terms of what product are we working on this year that might be from previous years. We go through that exercise in our engineering, at our engineering level, to create that document, because when we do ask the board to approve a CIP budget for the year, water and sewer, and even clean water, we're looking at cash flow. We're looking at how much money are we going to spend in a given year on not just the products that you approve, but the products that are in process. We have a cap, an artificial cap that I've given engineers, which is between $75 and $90 million, the cash flow, roughly 35 water, 45 sewer, and I know that doesn't add up to that, but it's in that range, and the reason why we do that is because we want to make sure that our water rates and our Avalorum rates don't explode, and that's how we come up with those logics. But we do go through that exercise. We can provide you with a list of everything that's in the works, whether it's in design, whether it's in bidding, whether it's in construction, but it all is part of our prioritization on an annual basis. And we will, Susan will show you that next week.
Thank you.
Next week? No.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, yeah. So we'll show you that, but we can provide.
That's what, Tuesday is what?
A week from Tuesday, the 21st.
And what's that? What's her meeting?
That's the strategic.
Strategic planning.
My engineering department.
Okay. That's fine. And further questions? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item number 11. Committee on Organization, consideration of potential action regarding appointment of commissioners to committees. Is there a motion to accept?
Moving.
Moved and seconded. Okay.
Yeah, the Committee on Organization met today and unanimously approved the assignment of some new and existing commissioners to various committees, and a matrix like this is, I'm sure, available to all commissioners, which will explain a great deal of who's doing what and where they're from. And there'll be additions also, as we go forward, to help clarify certain things.
Yeah, this will be updated. This sheet that shows the committees, who's on the committees and everything else, it's a spreadsheet, and it will be updated based on the people we've just put on new committees that have come on board. This will be updated in, what, this week sometime? And it will reflect the committee assignments for all committees of all the commissioners and what their status is, chairman and vice chairman. We've been just carrying X's for chairman and vice chairman, as Commissioner Buell has pointed out, that it should be designated where the chairman and the vice chairman are and things of that nature. But we're giving much more information in this broad spreadsheet than we have in the past. The number of committees, the committees, the number of members that can be appointed to that specific committee and significant issues such as act quorum, current committee size, fixed committee size, and things. You'll get an update on that after we make these additions, and these are additions of new commissioners that have come on board that are being assigned to committee assignments. Any questions? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item. Item number 12. Discussion regarding community outreach for integrated plan. Scott?
So I know it's late.
This is going to be quick.
I'm going to try and be very brief. I don't, this is really, really important, probably our highest priority for the MDC and the staff in the next number of years, is going to be the integrated plan and the work that we need to do to comply with the consent order. And I hate to skim through this because it's really important, but in the light of.
You've got to spend some time with what's happening around us.
You know what I mean? So I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through it as quickly as I can. The important part of this outreach, the purpose for this outreach is to really get a sense from the community that we're about to go into, under the integrated planning, to get a feel for how, how can we best modify our message so that we get the community to understand what we're trying to do? It's really, we're looking for feedback. On February 22nd, we're scheduling meetings, a meeting with the local NRZs in a specific part of Hartford, so that we can get feedback from them, and we're looking for feedback from the commission as well, to help us as engineers better communicate with what we need to do, what the scope of the work is, what the schedule will be. And so we started in 2020, recognizing that engineers aren't the best communicators of a very technical issue, and we started developing with Nick Salimi and Julie McLaughlin, more of a really simplified cartoon videos that really helps simplify the technical issues. And so the integrated plan was approved. We have what we call Phase 1. Phase 1 is really being driven in the Blue Hills, Granby Street areas of town because of the mandate from the consent order. The consent order, the first mandate is you must eliminate the overflows to the north branch of the Park River. There's four of them. In order to actually do that and eliminate, even start design, we must do a drainage study in that area. So that's the reason why we're focusing on the 22nd in the Blue Hills, Granby areas, because we need to partner with the city of Hartford, and we just sent over a revised MOU today, because it's going to be a joint venture in the drainage study to understand what is the magnitude of the concerns and how do we develop priority scope. When you're separating a street, you're going to have a storm pipe that's in the ground or a sewer pipe that's in the ground, it's both storm and sewer, and when you separate, is that pipe going to become the storm pipe or the sewer pipe? Analyze all of the drainage, drainage district to understand what priorities, how much water, where is it going to go, what has to happen to the north branch of the Park River, because that's going to be the water channel that conveys the water out of the city once we separate that. So although we're doing lots of work in the Hartford area, we're focused mainly on Granby and Blue Hills because of the need to do the drainage study first. The reason why the drainage study is needed is because we're using separation in those areas to eliminate these overflows. So some areas, when we're just building larger pipes, like in the West End, you don't need a drainage study because you're just increasing the size of the pipes that's serving the area. You're collecting the storm water in the sewer, but here, we need to understand how much, to what extent, we have to separate and eliminate the storm water to get to that consent order mandate, which is eliminate the overflows to the north branch of the Park River. So we're going to start out, we've got two videos, we're making another one, but this is how we're going to present at this first meeting. Nick, go ahead, and some of you have already seen these before.
What is the Clean Water Project charge on my MDC water bill? The Clean Water Project is an over $2 billion upgrade of the MDC's wastewater collection and treatment systems. These upgrades are designed to protect people's health and safety and improve the environment. Like many old cities, Hartford sewers have only one pipe for both wastewater and storm water. Even in towns with separated sewers, storm water can enter the MDC's system through sump pumps, downspouts, and driveway drains, and cracked or damaged sewer pipes. When it rains as little as a quarter inch, storm water can overwhelm the MDC's sewers, causing sewage water to flood basements, streets, or overflow directly into the Connecticut River and other waterways. The Clean Water Project helps solve this problem. To date, completed improvements, like treatment plant upgrades, sewer separation projects, and relining existing pipes, have eliminated over 500 million gallons of overflows annually. With a storage tunnel under construction, continued treatment plant expansion, and other clean water projects in MDC towns, the MDC continues to demonstrate its commitment to environmental stewardship. Integrated Plan. The MDC proposed implementing an integrated plan to manage the next phase of the Clean Water Project, or CWP. The plan establishes a framework and schedule that will allow the district to satisfy the current needs of its aging sewer system and meet the CWP's regulatory requirements. How does the MDC balance these important priorities and keep customer costs in check? Integrated planning is a strategy that combines the federally and state mandated clean water project work with improvement projects to the existing aging sewer system. By extending the CWP's schedule over a longer period of time and integrating repairs and improvement projects, the MDC can more effectively use funds and control costs. Integrated planning will ultimately benefit MDC customers through more planned sewer repairs, which cost less than emergency repairs when old pipes fail, smaller sewer separation projects to avoid lengthy construction work and minimize disruptions to neighborhoods. Integrated planning makes sense. Building large tunnels and bigger treatment plants is only effective if the pipes carrying the wastewater are in good repair. Given more time, the MDC can achieve the CWP's regulatory obligations while also repairing existing pipes before they fail, saving ratepayers money, and achieving water quality goals.
So that's our attempt to explain the technical piece without having. So, so that's our attempt to explain the technical piece without having to get into what the Clean Water Project is all about. This meeting, again, on the twenty-second, which is not a public meeting, we're asking, we're inviting the NRZs that represent these areas, we're asking, the chairman has, and I have talked and asked for three commissioners, Commissioner Gene Holloway, Commissioner Diane Lewis, and new Commissioner Anderson, to attend this meeting as well. We've invited Joe Shereko.
Shere.
He's asked to come. And we're gonna, we invited the city of Hartford. We, we did reach out to offer this to DEEP and to EPA. I think they wanna stand back from, you know, we, we really need this to be a productive meeting for the NRZs to really explain to us, is our message correct? Do we have the right stakeholders in the room? Are there others that should be there? And then help us draft our message. Because as part of the, as part of the integrated plan approval, we have to go and have a public hearing on April, in April of this year. But that's more of a global issue for all of the, the areas within phase one, so that would includes West Hartford and Hartford and, and others. And we don't want, we gotta get this drainage study done so we can focus on these areas in the Blue Hills, Granby. So that's why we're prioritizing this meeting first. So the, the first, this is just a graphic of, you know, what I just mentioned. We're going to obviously meet internally, and then we're going to meet with key members of the NRZs, not the entire NRZ, but just key members, and then get their feedback and based on project area, obviously. The, the, the areas that are identified with, with the gray circles, those are projects in, the first set of projects in, in, in phase one. The two up in the top here is, we call it Granby nine and Granby seven, and that's with the Blue Hills NRZs. We're also gonna be meeting with the West End in Asylum because if you look at those two projects, Blue Hills, Granby, we're separating to achieve a goal of elimination of two overflows to the north branch. So we need to do a drainage study. The new NMBI, which is a new pipe, eighty-four inch diameter, it's just bigger, and it's gonna, it's not what we want, but it's, it's the right thing to do. We're making a bigger pipe, and that doesn't need a drainage study. So that's gonna be starting as soon as really we're, we're doing drainage studies in, in, in Blue Hills and Granby area.
Chris, Scott, where's the outflow for that? Is that the outflow for West End?
So we have N two and four, which is in the north part of Granby, and then you've got NMBI nine and ten, which is, Jason, where's, where physically where the...
They're going into what, though? The Park River?
Yeah, yeah, North Branch Park.
And nine and ten, North Branch.
So let's just skip through this real quick, just keep going. Strategy, so just go back, I'm sorry. So these are the people that we've invited and, and will attend. Again, we're trying to keep this, we don't want this to turn into what happened in the North End, and I'm gonna rely on our commissioners to make sure that happens.
On the Main Street.
Yeah, we, we want, this has gotta be a really technical conversation with our NRZs so we can understand what we need to do to be successful in getting the support from the community that we're gonna be working in. Go, go ahead, Nick. So this is just a, a map depiction of phase one, right? This is phase one of the Clean Water Project. Again, the upper left-hand corner, that's the Granby, Blue Hills area, achieving elimination of those two overflows to the north branch, separation. The, the West End, which is the, the red line here, yeah, you got that, Nikki, right there, is, that's the NMBI. That's, that's gonna achieve the other goal of the other two overflows. This schedule is dictated to us by DEEP. Some would argue, well, why aren't you going to North Main Street or to Gully Brook first? Because this is what we were mandated to do first, north branch of the Park River. And that's some of the argument, right? The community would argue, is that the water quality in the north branch is driving this, this, remember I said environmentalists? The environmentalists are driving this discussion, why we're doing this first. So, go ahead, Nick. This is just the schedule as we talked about, two thousand twenty-six. We gotta start separation, but we gotta do the drainage study first, right? Go ahead, Nick. This is just a depiction of the Granby area, and that will be separated as part of our project. The hashed mark here is really important because, thank you, Nick, because that is the Granby two-five area, which is really important in this discussion. In the August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one storm, someone would say, you spent a lot of money and time out there, three years, thirty million dollars, and we had the same problems everybody else had in, in, in Granby area. Why? We'll talk about that. Go ahead, Nick. And this is really important because this is part of the conversation, right? We, we cannot not tell the, the, the community what has to happen. We cannot say to the community, we're gonna clean, complete the Clean Water Project and everything's gonna be fine. That's a lie. Can't do it, right? So we have to explain to them in this, in these meetings, what else has to happen to make Granby two-five project work the way it was intended to work? So this is just some of the streets. Thomason Street, on the meeting we had in last week, the sixth, was it? The meeting on the sixth?
Sixth.
We had a gentleman, Mr. Green, who lives right on Granby and Thomason, right on the corner there. He said, he was part of the separation project. He said, I don't get sewer in my basement anymore, but my street is flooded, my house is overwhelmed by, by street, by flooding from the street. So he's not getting, the, the, our project is doing its job, but why is he getting all this water in? Granted, that was a two-hundred-year storm, and no system's gonna be designed for that. But, keep going, Nick. This is the, the challenge, right? So we have the MOU we talked about with the city of Hartford. So we're gonna separate, we're gonna do our job. It may not be what the community wants, but it's what we're mandated to do. With DEEP, we're trying to eliminate overflows to the river, tributaries to the Connecticut River. The way that DEEP looks at regulating, regulating us as a utility, as a wastewater utility, they can, and EPA, they can only regulate the storm water and the sewer that's in our pipe. And, and they tell us when it can come out of our pipe and when it can't. One-year level of control or elimination to the north branch of the Park River, right? Or elimination to the cove. But that's their regulation. Anything that doesn't get in our pipe that's above ground, like what happened on Albany Avenue, two feet of water, three feet of water on Albany Avenue, it's not regula, regulated till, well, is that a word?
Regulated.
Regulated, thank you. So you can't regulate us on that because with, because it's not, it's not, it's not a regulation that, that falls under our purview. So, so here's what's happening. You've got overflows, right now existing overflows to the north branch of the Park River, and in this case, this is Granby two-five. This is, this is why Mr. Green saw storm water invading his, his property. Again, it was a two-hundred-year storm, and none of this system is designed for a ten-year storm, right? That's what, we're talking about a ten-year storm versus a two-hundred-year storm. But, but the, still the challenge is, is that the existing pipes that are in the river, the top depicts, you know, you've got basically sediment in the bottom of the river, and this would be on a dry day with no, with no rain, right? The one below it is a, a ten-year storm. So we always talk about ten-year storms, and that's what the standard is for DOT and for drainage systems across the country. In a ten-year storm, as we know, water seeks its own level, right? So the water in the river, if you go all the way up to Granby, where the overflow regulator is in the street, it's at the same elevation. So guess what happens? All the separation work that we did, and all that water that's now separated into a storm pipe, it hits this regulator and it can't go anywhere because it's at the same elevation as the river. So it backs up, and it starts backing up. And so that's the reason why the city of Hartford and us, MDC, are partnering together because the, this is an existing condition independent of the Clean Water Project. And there's other areas up along Granby with, where, you know, that, we're not touching. So they still have this very condition. So this has gotta be addressed. We can separate, but we need a place to discharge the water. There's other areas in this, in, in this area that, that aren't being separated and do not need to be separated as part of the Clean Water Project, but are having the same issue, the same backup is occurring because of this condition. Go ahead, Nick. This is, you've seen this before, the cracks in the pipe, that's our responsibility, right? That's our job under the Clean Water Project, to fix the cracks. This is a depiction of really a separated system like in West Hartford or Newington. But, but the, the point is, our job is to fix the cracks in, in the main system. We wanna, you know, find ways to fix the cracks throughout our system and as, as cheaply as we can, and we line those pipes in, in some cases. And when we separate, we'll decide, okay, does that pipe, is it at the right elevation for us to use it as a storm, or should we use it as a sewer? And that's what the drainage study will start to tell us. What, what, what is the best use of that existing infrastructure once we fix it? We line it, now we put the new pipe in, and what does that become? And it all comes down to plumbing and basements and, and plumbing and elevations of the river and all those good things. Go ahead, Nick. You know, these are just examples of additional issues that cause street flooding that, that, you know, the, the top pictures are backwater valves that aren't maintained, that are old, that are doing its, its job because it's just not being maintained. The other issues we've talked about, obviously, is, is street flooding, is, you know, keeping, and I've said this before, the city of Hartford has done a great job on Albany Avenue, cleaning the catch basins and the covers. We got to the point of, we got to the point of putting up stainless steel covers on the throat of, of the catch basin, which would stop the, the, the garbage or the leaves from being pushed into or swept into our catch basins because that's, that's contributing to surcharging and backups in the street. Go ahead, Nick. This is just a depiction of the area. Now, this is a city of Hartford flood control map, which shows the north branch of the Park River in purple. You know, the city of Hartford and the flood control commission own the responsibility to maintain the north branch of the Park River. Our position is, the, the water that we discharge to right now, and what the city discharges to right now, can't get out properly and is flooding, and in part, it's flooding the community. And so not only does it need to be dredged for the MDC projects, but it has to be dredged for the city and the community as well, because the parts of the city would be affected as well. So this is, this is just an example of, this is part of that same report, and if you see number twenty-one, north branch of the Park River channel improvements, so this is a city document, not an MDC document, and it identifies three-point-five million dollars in improvements under their SWIFT program. As you know, we talked a lot about the, the, the dike system failing and boiling and the chance of, if water gets above thirty feet in the river, the dikes could fail. That mandated a, the Army Corps of Engineers mandated a SWIFT program to, for the city to improve the flood control system. The dikes is one component of it. The north branch of the Park River is another component. So that was identified as a low priority, but, and I don't pretend to know what the three-point-five million was, study or actual work. Go ahead, Nick. These are just examples of these outfalls. The left picture is the outfall in a dry day. The, the, the right pictures are, as you can see, these structures are underwater in just a two-year to five-year storm. So they're, the capacity, it's like a bathtub, you know? If you, if you, if your bathtub holds a hundred gallons of water and you fill it with sand, it's not gonna hold a hundred gallons of water, right? So that's what's happening. Go ahead, Nick. Just more examples, you know, this picture, we just took that picture last couple of weeks ago. That's a north branch of the Park River, and if you, if you can see, that's, you know, there's a lot of garbage and debris, and that's, as anyone knows, when SWIFT water is running, this, the solids, meaning dirt, leaves, it's contained within the flow, right? As soon as that water slows down, everything starts to settle. So that's like a dam for the water. The, the water hits that, the solids hit it, and everything starts to settle. So these are the kinds of things that need to be addressed, not just for MDC, but for the city. Go ahead, Nick. Okay, this is just the point to be made. Some people have said, which is a fair question, the MDC under the integrated plan, we sold the integrated plan for all the reasons that you remember. As, as the video mentioned, it's, we do it over a longer period of time, it's less costly to the, to the customers, and we actually replace pipes. So on Granby two-five, we replaced the street, we replaced the laterals, we replaced the, the sewer and the storm pipes in the street. In some cases, people got new driveways, some places people got new, new fences. Real infrastructure that's failing, right? But a tunnel, this is a regulator issue. A tunnel, the reason why the regulators like the tunnel, because the tunnel's over at the riverside and it's collecting the overflow, doesn't care about the pipes in the street, doesn't care about how does the water get to the overflow? It's from the pipes in the street. But if the pipes are failing, you're gonna wind up paying for a tunnel, you're gonna wind up having to pay for the pipes too someday. And so we sold the, the DEEP staff on the fact that instead of spending all this money on more tunnels, let's spend the money on real infrastructure in the front of people's homes, solve the same problem. Takes a little longer, but you're basically killing two birds with one stone. You're, you're taking the storm water out of the system rather than with a tunnel collecting it and bringing it to the plant. But in both cases, in both cases, the only, the amount of water that's being collected is the same. It's not like the tunnel was bigger and could handle a two-hundred-year storm, or a fifty-year storm, or a twenty-five-year storm. It's still collecting the same amount of water that we would remove under separation. So that's why it's better for the community to have the separation projects. And it's painful, and we learned our lessons at Granby two-five. It took us three years, way too large of a project. We need to make those projects more footprint so that we don't impact the community, you know, people are parked on the street, and that's normal, and you, you disrupt all of that living for, for the community. Go ahead, Nick. And then this is just, we're gonna spend a lot of time talking about the backwater valve. I think that's very important. I think, Dave, you made a great point.
We spent two million dollars.
Yeah, but Dave made a good point last week and asked a question about, you know, do we have good information about the responsibility of, of the person, the homeowner to maintain? What are we gonna maintain? Beefing that up from Dave's comments, we're beefing that up, but we are gonna talk a lot about that. Again, backwater valves is, is, is a, is a Band-Aid, it's not a solution. We'd rather not use them, but you have to, because this is a long-term, ten, twelve, twenty-year program.
Oh, it's thirty years.
So we really wanna protect everyone today. And then as we build out our infrastructure, we will be able to take that storm water out of that home and hopefully bring it to the river by gravity. We don't like sump pumps either, sump pumps fail, right? So we don't, mechanical devices are bad, we want, we want it to be gravity. But in a lot of cases, it may not be gravity. And again, drainage study, we need to study all this area to really understand what the impacts are. Go ahead, Nick. And this is just, you've seen this before, again, just to educate the, the, the residents and the, and the homeowners on liability, responsibility, you know, the customer side was the property line and on the water and the sewer. Go ahead, Nick.
The lateral.
Yeah. And you've seen this, I think, in the past, these are just, you know, we're trying to get the storm water that's, that's coming down from the roof and getting it out of the sewer system, and there's a number of ways to do that. We can splash it on the ground, in some cases... In some cases, that's not good, because it's making the neighborhood, uh, backyards wet. Um, uh, a lot of cases, that, that water will go to a new storm pipe in the street. Um, and, um, go ahead, Nick. This is just a depiction on improvements we've made with backwater valves, where, um, we used to just have the backwater valve here. Just, you know, in the, in the old days, in the twenties, thirties, forties, they'd put a backwater valve here, and the drainage, everything came through here. So when it closed, you would surcharge the home if you used your toilets. Or, when it rains, the back, the, the, the downspouts are tied to this, this sewer pipe in the, in your basement floor, and you're surcharging itself. And that's what happened with Mrs., um, Lewis, Sharon Lewis. She had a blockage right outside, ten feet outside her foundation, and, um, she had a, a clean-out cap right here that was open. And so, all, she had a blockage, all the rain was coming from her rain leaders into her basement, came out right here. And no one knew it, because she didn't have a plumber come and, uh, rod her.
She did have a plumber.
Well, she said she had one, but they didn't do it. Uh, we did it, um, we found out about it a month later from DEEP. Um, we went out there and we actually rotted it ourselves for them. And as I mentioned, um, Chris Leveque violated the ordinance when he did that, but we had to. We had to, we had to verify, like, what's going on here, right? No one else was doing it, we needed to do it ourselves, because of the liability. So we did that, um, and we cleared it immediately and resolved the issue, but it created lots of damage in the, in the property. Uh, go ahead, Nick. And this is just some, uh, pictures of, one way that we have been solving some of these basement plumbing issues is, uh, you might have a toilet in the basement on the other side of the house, and there's no way to get that backwater valve in the basement that's going to protect this, because of the way the, the house is plumbed. So, uh, what we've been doing is putting in up-flush toilets. So this is unfortunately a mechanical device, but it pumps up to, you know, to the, the, the ceiling level of your basement, which again, water sees its own level, right? So you're expecting that the water can't come in for the street, because the street's down lower than this. So, uh, this is a way to solve some plumbing issues. It's more expensive, that we pay for, uh, but we're, you know, as the chairman mentioned, we spent one point two million dollars last year in our backwater valve program. We budgeted two million dollars this year. So, we're spending more money, uh, and being more sophisticated. Dave Ruddy's done a great job with improving this program, uh, with his staff. So, anything else, Nick? And that's the meeting wrap-up. So, this is a presentation to Granby, Blue Hills area, specifically because of the schedule mandated by the consent order. We're looking for feedback from our commissioners and from, um, the, the stakeholders, um, the NRZs, the city of Hartford. Um, and, um, and hopefully we get good feedback. We'll modify, if the commissioners have any questions, any comments on this, uh, more than happy to make some, make, make some comments and changes to this. We will meet on the twenty-second. We will bring this in feedback to BPW on the first, March first. And then we will, um, get prepared and meet with other NRZs, um, on those other a- areas, uh, before that April meeting, uh, that were mandated.
Let me just say, one of the things, I think the positive things that came out of the meeting we had on the sixth, uh, the last one, uh, Main Street, was a gathering of EPA, uh, our United States Senator, um, and, uh, the city of Hartford and MDC, uh, and realized that everybody's got to be a player in this process, not just MDC, uh, not just the city of Hartford. And, uh, hopefully, we have the true consensus of that group, especially the feds, that they've got to play in this game too with us, in the state specifically, uh, DEEP. If we're going to solve, not solve the problem, mitigate the problem, because the environmental impact that we're getting is something we have never seen before, significantly never seen before. We've never saw, uh, I've never saw a hundred-year storm here. Uh, we had a two-hundred-year storm. We had both in the same week, to intensify it even more. That's the street flooding you're getting, but that causes the problems here. And it's a longer, it's a longer schedule than twelve years, as they started out, uh, to, to deal with this realistically, and not just the river and Long Island Sound. So, we're trying to expand that. Questions? Peter? I'm sorry, Commissioner Gardo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You use the acronym NRZ over and over and over again. I know it as non-return-to-zero. What, what does NRZ mean, please?
Neighborhood Revitalization Zones.
Okay, and is?
They're, they're laid out.
It's a community group that represents that community, and, um, uh, we will have, uh,
The, the community would be a neighborhood.
Right.
Right.
But there's, um, we will have, um, you want to, you got a map, uh, Nikki, right?
Commissioner Gardo, there's, it's basically a map of Hartford broken down by neighborhood, and there's about, I would say about thirteen NRZs.
Thirteen of them.
Okay.
We have the map.
So, no, no, I, I, so the point of. Now I understand.
So the three that are adjacent where the work is taking place is why we, why they're all chosen, that's why they're at this first group.
And they're represented it, it, of the community itself, each one of the community.
Understood, I just didn't know what the acronym meant, so, thank you.
Commissioner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I would just encourage, as we're going through this, um, that the state DOT is going through their planning for the resilience improvement plan on the federal government side. And if we haven't been in touch with them, to share with them some of our problem areas in the city of Hartford, I think that we have got to get on their schedule and make sure that we're in the resilience improvement plan, because that opens doors to access to federal funds, if we're on the state's resilience improvement plan for transportation. And some of these dovetail, you know, are typically, our systems are under streets. So, um, I think that we have to make sure that certain areas, at least we get in touch with the consultants that are working with StanTech right now on the resilience improvement plan, because I think that, again, that gives you more points when you're applying for federal grants.
We, we are working in that, we started this twelve years ago, fourteen years ago, with DEEP, DOT, on Albany Avenue. We went to Albany Avenue with a plan, a seventy-two-inch pipe, and they said absolutely not. They own the street, and it's their obligation. That's why we've got to work with DEEP, DOT, and everybody else at the state of Connecticut. So, the DOT understands that they do have an obligation to the city of Hartford. We are working in that direction with them. Um, hopefully, we get the cooperation of the state this time around. And we really didn't have cooperation from the city, because they turned it down last time along with DOT, when we were doing the, the streetscapes. And now we're going to have to go back in there, tear those streets, streetscapes up. We wouldn't have done it thirteen years.
If I could, Mr. Chair, I just want to make sure that these are included, because again, if it's not included, then you're not on the list, and then you're not, you don't have the opportunity to.
Point well taken.
And then the last comment that I have about this is, you know, people are hurting now, and they have issues now. And a lot of the infrastructure changes that we're talking about are years away. And so therefore, there's got to be some, as I would put it, like tactical urbanism, about how do we start to look at things, not only just large infrastructure plans, but how do we start to look in a sustainable, just like we did out here on Wells Street? You know, we made some improvements over here, we have, you know, are there, are there systems that we can put into place quickly that are environmentally sustainable, that might be able to help? Are there properties that we own where we could actually, you know, have some reserve? Um, you know, I'm struggling with some words at eight-thirty at night, but, um, you know, I think we've got to look at how do we act, not only now, because if I'm in this community, I'm saying, that's great, that's five years away, what are you doing for me now? And so I think we've got to have some.
We've got to have the cooperation of DEEP to do that. They direct us on what we can do and what we can't do, and that's what we're trying to work out with.
We have offered to, to that point, we have offered, uh, to not only DEEP, uh, to EPA.
EPA.
Uh, we've offered to, um, um, Senator Blumenthal's office and, uh, um, Congressman Loxton, that, again, the schedule is dictated by DEEP, right? So, the city of Hartford right now is planning a streetscape on the North Main Street area. They also are planning to spend a significant amount of money, about seven million dollars, to deal with, um, flooding, street, or look-alike flooding, because of the, um, um, Stowe Village, Napier Plain area. What we have proposed is, if DEEP would allow us to do our project ahead of schedule on North Main Street, and we join forces with the city of Hartford with their project, then maybe we can solve a problem. And instead of the city wasting seven million dollars and us wasting X million dollars, together, we can actually solve the problem. But the problem is really in that area, like Albany Avenue.
Overflow.
There needs to be a storm pipe directly to the, uh, North Menos Pond, or to the river. That's what is needed, there's so much water there. Um, so those are the kinds of solutions we're hopeful that DEEP will consider, and, and Grand Stevens was, it is willing to consider that. Um, so we'll be talking through that process with the city and with, uh, DEEP. And EPA is very supportive. Um, so there's, I agree with you a hundred percent. We, we are hopeful that, um, uh, as the chairman said, um, DOT has a responsibility to Albany Avenue. That is a state road, and, um, they are really, there's been a longstanding battle between the city of Hartford and DOT on Albany Avenue, and the state needs to step up on that.
And, and, and the issue is that the legislative people are interested in it, but they want to see a plan. That's why this study becomes so significant, that we do begin to develop a, a plan, but we need a study to be able to articulate that and, and form it. And, and that's what hopefully this process will now, uh, create, uh, in, in that sense. So it's, it's, it's going to be, uh, an issue that, uh, is going to take some time, and it's going to take some cooperation and a, a commitment. And there's infrastructure money out there from the federal government, hopefully gets funded, could be a piece of it too. Commissioner Taylor?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I guess where I get a little concerned here is, um, you know, we've got these plans, long, short-term, medium-term. Uh, you're going to have to coordinate a lot of agencies. But the fact of the matter is that, um, folks may be flooded out. And I guess the question, at least in my mind, while we're formulating all of these plans, which I think we should be doing, is what about those folks? I mean, um, you know, a lot of those folks don't have deep pockets. Uh, I'm not quite sure what their insurance coverage, uh, is, or will be, or is going to be. Uh, and should we be thinking about either having someone, I don't know, in the city or somewhere, uh, formulating some kind of plan, or some kind of temporary insurance plan? I mean, I don't know. But I guess what I'm thinking about here, once again, is, you know, until we either get those areas in shape and also deal with, um, the problems or deficiencies with regards to individual properties, we're going to have folks that are flooded. And, and I just, I would like for us to either, and I'm not saying that we have to do it. I'm not saying that the MDC has to take all of this on, but I think someone has got to focus on that. Because it's all rather interesting to discuss it here, but when somebody's standing there and looking at three feet of water, or, you know, or eighteen inches of water in their basement, and everything is flooded out, becomes an issue. And I just, once again, to not beat this horse, I think that's something that we've got to look at on a temporary basis, until we get the infrastructure in the order that it should be.
Scott, you want to say something about rotting some of the other?
Yeah, the chairman just had, so I mentioned this, um, uh, at a couple of our meetings. And so, um, a- as you know, we mentioned, in one of the slides, it talks about ownership responsibility, private property ownership, and what's the responsibility, the homeowner versus what's the responsibility, MDC. Our ordinance is very clear, that on the water and the sewer service to the home, that, and even clearer, that even to the main, that the homeowner owns the responsibility of maintaining that pipe, right? Sewer and water. With the exception that if there's a break on the water or the sewer on, on the, um, uh, right-of-way, which is in the street, basically at the sidewalk, um, MDC will fix that. And, but the homeowner's responsible to fix everything on their property. To Commissioner Taylor's point, you know, we've got a lot of, um, uh, uh, homeowners and elderly in all of our towns that have a difficult time maintaining a backwater valve, or, um, or being able to afford a five, eight thousand dollar bill for a, for a, uh, for a, for a sewer lateral or a water main. And so, what I'm going to ask BPW to consider, and I mentioned this again at the last meeting, was, we had a RAFTELA study done, which, which justified, uh, MDC's charging a customer service charge for working on private property. And we do a lot of that, right? Two million dollars worth of work, where our staff is there, some contractors doing all kinds of work. So the logic would be, um, if, uh, we so choose as a board to, um, allow the MDC to, um, I'll give you an example, us possibly rotting, um, a service during an emergency for free. Or rotting, uh, a person's lateral, um, once a year. Or, um, uh, the concept of maybe lining, uh, there's lots of new technologies that we've been using for years now, lining or replacing a lateral for free, for all of our towns. Because if you think about it, we're collecting nine dollars a month from everyone, a hundred and two thousand customers, that's nine million dollars. And, um, you know, that, that will go up, because the, the report, RAFTELA's report identified that should be about nineteen dollars. So if the board so chose, that using that revenue that we're already collecting, uh, as a, um, a way to give back to the community, uh, to replace those, that infrastructure that's failing. Still have them keep the responsibility and the liability, but as you know, replacing a, an old clay tile pipe with a PVC pipe, PVC pipe will last forever, right? Um, so that's one thing that we could consider as a board, moving forward, as, uh, as providing some additional services for free to our, our eight-member towns. Um, and, um, that's something I'm going to ask.
Well, free, but with a broader charge.
Yeah, with a broader charge, but, but it's really, uh, in a couple of different scenarios. In an emergency, um, our ordinances do not allow us to do that. So we would ask to, to change the ordinances that would allow the MDC. We would still use the subcontractor to do that work, and it would still be all kinds of forms that, uh, would have to be signed off by the property owner. For example, if we went into, uh, for example, if we went into Mrs., um, uh, Sharon Lewis's house that night, and our ordinances allowed us to rod her lateral for her, um, and let's say we rotted it, and, because the ordinance was changed, but then the sewer lateral collapsed, because it was rotting. That happens a lot, you know, you've got a clay pipe, and you've got all this, uh, roots and stuff inside, and you rot it, and then the pipe collapses on you. Who's going to take ownership of that, right? So, we got to, it's got to be a thoughtful conversation with, with BPW and the full board about what we do and how we do it. You really, it's a, it's a can of worms when you start working on private property, because you could own, uh, a much bigger liability real quick. Um, and so, but we would like to talk about this, this coming year.
But this is also a problem, and not just happening in Hartford, it's going to be happening in suburbs, because most of that is after the war, just fifty years out, sixty years out, relative to what's happened. So, that's what our total service area is going to be comprised of. Commissioner Torres?
I know we've, I've raised the same issue in, in past meetings, I've said the same thing, that we need to have something deliberate and quick, and, uh, at the moment with, when it is needed or prior to. Because all these other things are going to take time. But, you know, I think that, uh, we can at least try some very simple kinds of things prior to, though, especially in those areas, wherever the city, town, uh, it may be occurring, that we prepare for. It's, it's almost like having a, you know, a preparedness plan for emergencies, you know? So that, if we know these things are going to happen, and they will happen, okay? Let's not be caught, you know, unprepared. Let's make sure that we have the capabilities to pump out these, pump out the basements as quickly as possible. That we're telling people who own homes that, you know, wherever possible, to raise their furnaces at another twelve inches on tinder blocks or something. Uh, that we make sure that every single, you know, that we check all of the, our back, the, uh, the, uh, check valves in those, in those, in those. valves in those, in those, in those basements, that they are operational. You know, all of these kinds of things are little things, but they will help to a great extent. And then, you know, and then the flooding occurs, but we at least can control some of it, and we can help bring back normalcy as quickly as possible to these places, so they don't have to wait a week before the basement is pumped out, because they've got a broken check valve, you know, and, and now they've got sewage in it. Yeah, I mean, we don't, you know, we need to be looking at simple things. As an MDC, you know, we deal with the big issues. We've got big pipes, we've got big construction things, but these are little things. And the little things that we can do, you know, to prevent, you know, these things from happening, we should be doing. It's education, it's working with the cities, we're working with the towns to make sure that we have a plan prior to, you know, so we do this now, we start today, you know, making sure that we do everything possible so we don't have the situation we have with, with our neighbor in North Hartford, where, you know, the water comes down, you know, and it floods the basin because, because the lateral, you know, it, to the, you know, to the outside is, is full of roots, you know, those kinds of things. So, I think we need to do something small, but if we do a lot of small things, you know, we can at least control some of it, and then as soon as it does happen, have a plan in place to make sure that we try to get normalcy back to these folks as soon as possible. It can't be sitting around, you know, with, with a furnace which isn't working, or a stinky basement full of sewage, you know, that, whether it's a store or a home, that they can't live in. So, you know, we've got to put those things, those kinds of things in place, those simple stuff, but we got to do it. And we got to work with the towns to make sure that we have a plan. I don't know that we have one.
Further discussion? Commissioner Drake?
The only question I have, why is Hartford still connected their gutters to the sewer line? And why, and to me, if you disconnected, first of all, the leaves and all the jump wouldn't go down there. And you slow the, if you had a big rainstorm, you, it's all going to the street eventually, but you slow it down, so the pipes could handle it. I don't know if you've ever read stuff Hartford has connected.
West Hartford has it as well.
Well, they should be. I understand you have payments, so you're going to have some service, service funded. But you're going to slow it going down to the sewer. But we don't have in Weathersfield, they go around, they'll get a flood.
You had a separate system.
So ironically, right, the, I've said this before, the problem is stormwater, no matter what town you're in, right? Our sewer pipes are plenty big enough to handle sewer, right? If we had no rain in our, or stormwater in our sewer pipes, we would not have one backup.
But if you disconnect it, you slow it down.
No, no, no. What, just, I'm just trying to get to my point, I'm sorry. But the, but the problem is, what's happening in Hartford is allowed to happen in Hartford, because it's a CSO community, and because, as you can imagine, the density is much, much higher, and you don't want a side, you don't want a sidewalk with a, with a, with a rain leader dumping water on a 32-degree day on the sidewalk. So, so the water is intended to go into the CSO system. In West Hartford, Newington, Weathersfield, any of our towns, they, they're not allowed to dump their stormwater in, except they are. Because what's happening is, the homes that were built in the 20s here in Hartford, the same construction was done in West Hartford and Newington, but that we have such a high groundwater table in this region because of the clay that's from the Connecticut River, water doesn't drain. West, East Hartford is the only lucky town.
It's going to blow the sand.
East Hartford is the only lucky town, because they've got a lot of sand. So, they don't have the problems that the other towns have, but the water doesn't drain. In Newington, the water table is nine feet above our sewer pipe. Nine feet. So, it's obvious, if you've got a cracked old pipe, the water's just going to penetrate. Weathersfield, same thing. So, the way that the stormwater is getting into our system in those seven other towns is very similar, because in most cases, those houses built in the 30s, the 40s, and the 50s, or 60s, the water comes in from the gutters, goes down into the basement, connects to the sewer system under the floor.
I'll be honest with you, in Weathersfield, they have people walking around, they'll give you a fine. So, I'm sure there's some, I understand, I'm sure there's...
I can tell you a few that would be in trouble.
But I tell you, I understand, but the whole town, it's very... I understand better than you.
You wouldn't want to be the cop in that town.
Yeah, it's prevalent. It's prevalent, but if you, I always use West Hartford as the bad example, but every other town has the same problem. West Hartford on a dry day, $8 million. West Hartford on a wet day, $80 million. Where's that water coming from? It's not coming from leaky pipes. A portion of it is, but if you look at Newington, and I'm going to guess, and I bet you I'll be pretty close.
Not the same place.
West, Newington's probably $3 million gallons on dry day, and probably...
$30 million.
$20 million? Two to 11. Two to 11. So, the, so the magnitude's the same, right? Two to 11, eight to, eight to 80. The magnitude is the same, it's just that they're not supposed to be dumping that water in, but they are. I mean, and, and, and the problem that we have is, we could go in and find them. Southernton, the town of Southernton, about 15 years ago, they approved a program, $100 fine. We're going to fine you $100 if you're dumping stormwater in. So, everybody says, sure, I'll pay the $100 bucks. Doesn't solve the problem, right? And if you, and if you find someone, it doesn't mean when you walk in there, you got to send somebody out there to verify and find them, then you got to go back and check to make sure they didn't hook up to some... The best solution for all of our towns is to put storm systems in other people's houses.
Yeah, but you're 20 years away from them.
Yes.
Like he says, you need some, a quick, put rain, put rain guard barrels in, because you're looking to slow it down.
No, rain, no. Rain barrels is fine, it sounds good, but it's 50 ounces.
Let's not get into a back and forth. Let's, one person speak.
If I looked at that display, you're 20 years away from them.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
Good luck.
Okay. David? Commissioner Stuber?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, there's a lot to say on this subject. Appreciate all the conversation we've had on this tonight, and I won't retread any of the points that have already been raised or things that have been touched on, but I just make, want to make a couple of observations. First, I appreciate the effort that's being made to get the word out to the folks in the community in Hartford, particularly about things like backwater valves and maintenance of them, and things that can be done like immediately right now, that folks can take action on. I think the more that we can do to get the word out about that, appreciate the, getting the word about the instructions of how to actually do the maintenance. I don't know if it's possible to do something like, you know, even like putting a YouTube video up that actually showed you how to physically do it, because I read through those instructions, and it kind of makes sense, but it's rather technical. And particularly, what we're about most is, is, you know, older senior citizen may have difficulty getting around the house and doing maintenance jobs, and it's a tall, it's a tall order. And I do wonder, too, as we move forward into the future, if it might be possible to look at things like sensors or alarms that could kind of detect if there is a blockage in place on a backwater valve, perhaps that's something as we continue to, you know, deal with this problem, that it could be explored as a technological solution. Also, just, just looking at that, that work prioritization schedule, I appreciate, as has been, as has been said many times tonight, that, you know, environmental concerns really drive the schedule that was set for the, for the Clean Water Project as a whole, but there has been a great deal of conversation over the last couple of years in light of the flooding that we did see a couple of years ago. And I think there's increasing sensitivity with it, with, on the part of a lot of key folks within DOT about the urgency of this issue, and what people are suffering. And I do wonder if it might be possible in light of that, particularly given the long timescales involved, to have some conversations about reprioritization of some of that work, because I think that for, for a Hartford resident who does see that fee on their bill, and they've been paying it now, and they've been paying it for years, and to have to wait many, many years for any type of work that might even produce a small level of improvement in what they're seeing on a day-to-day basis, the more we can move that timetable up, I think probably the better. The last thing I'll just observe, just observe is that, you know, this, this stormwater issue is not going to go away, and I think it's going to, it's going to impact everybody across the entire metro region. I mean, this is, this, the increased stormwater that we're seeing, you know, these kind of 200-year storms happening too in a, in a week, I mean, that shouldn't be possible in a human lifetime to see two of those storms, let alone in the space of just one month. And this is just, this is the way that the climate change is manifesting itself in our part of the world. While we're seeing the southwest of the country dry out, and they can't find enough water, they're desperate to find more water, here, we're getting more of it than we're able to handle. And this is going to be, I think, one of the defining issues and most difficult challenges that this organization and others like it all across New England have to grapple with over the decades ahead. And so, you know, it's a, it's a massive challenge, but just with that, I would say I'm glad to be here as a new member, and I'll try to sit back and learn as much as I can.
Just in, in closing this conversation, look back 50 some, almost 50 years ago. In 50, 1976, the federal government's relationship on sewer funding was same as the highways. It was 80% federal and 20% state. In '77, they made a decision to get out of the sewer business, and it ended, the subsidy ended. And that's where we find ourselves, instead of planning for environmental change or anything else, developing, the money wasn't there. And that's what we've struggled with for 50 years, so.
One other comment I might make on that point, Mr. Chairman, the city has been taking quite a careful look at it. There've been a lot of infrastructure bills passed by recently, making funding available for infrastructure of all kinds, but this type of stormwater need is really not something that was, has been contemplated in a lot of those bills. We're finding that it isn't eligible for a lot of, as much funding as there is out there for this type of need, there aren't a lot of resources. And so, we're having those conversations with our congressional delegation members, but it's, it's the kind of issue that could use the amplification of more voices to raise the level of attention and concern, so that it can, you know, get the attention that it does deserve and need.
We're going to hopefully get this infrastructure bills funded in 2023. Anyway, okay, without further discussion, can we move on to item number 13, consideration? Who wants to listen to Scott again? I'm just kidding, too. 13, consideration and potential action regarding meeting transcripts. I'd ask that this be, can be referred to the Board of Finance, because we're going to have to put some money into do this if we do it. Let's see what's there, and come back and report to the board. Is there a motion to refer?
Remove. Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post? Okay. Item 13, opportunity for general public comments.
Judy Allen, West Hartford. I'll keep it real short. I heard some wonderful ideas here about doing something immediately, not keep telling people it's going to happen eventually, and I really hope that you listen, staff and leadership, that they have some wonderful ideas. Please listen. Thank you.
Jesus Christ. Further comment? If not, the appropriate motion to adjourn is in order. It's removed and seconded. Without objection, we stand...